Rosha Goel has more.
City Attorney Mike Fuerer refers to them as neighborhood problem solvers. He now has 21 prosecutors onboard in his Neighborhood Prosecutor Program, which tackles quality of life issues impacting LA neighborhoods.
It provides an opportunity for communities not to be remote from City Hall, but to feel that the community is best served when the neighborhood has prosecutors from our team there.
Their program works with law enforcement and community members to solve problems affecting neighborhoods such as vandalism, illegal dumping, and gang activity. Among the prosecutors is Cynthia Gonzalez, who grew up in a gang-infested neighborhood to become the first in her family to go to college and get a doctorate degree.
Growing up, I was exposed to violence, to crime, to gangs. And I never really understood that there was a world out there where this didn't exist. I didn't know. That's all I knew.
The goal of Neighborhood Prosecutors? To identify and address criminal problems before they grow into more serious offenses.
So really, we try and do a whole-rounded solution to all the problems in the city.
In further expanding this program, the city attorney's office will also hold meetings throughout the city, allowing community members to meet their Neighborhood Prosecutor. I'm Rosha Goel for LA This Week.
For more information on the Neighborhood Prosecutors Program, you can call 213-978-4093. And the city attorney, police, and city leaders are also turning their attention to helping prevent fraud committed against senior citizens. Anna Marcos has the story.
Senior citizens got together with members of the neighborhood and even city leaders to sing and dance at this West LA senior center in a picture of community harmony.
Yeah!
Unfortunately, community scams are also part of the picture for seniors.
As the population is graying and more baby boomers become seniors, they're also more of a target.
Whether they pose as DWP meter readers, as people who are going door-to-door selling magazines, telemarketers, people who are trying to prey on you and prey on our vulnerable seniors.
No more scams. We're not going to be preyed on anymore.
The event helped raise community awareness about senior fraud.
In jail in Spain, and he needs $2,500 for bail?
The skit being played out, the ever-popular Grandma scam. Internet scams targeting seniors are also on the rise, but the most common one is a lot closer to home.
Most of the time, seniors are victims of fraud by people that they know.
Here are some tips: monitor your financial accounts monthly; share information on scams with friends; be wary of telemarketing and internet superdeals; and finally, don't let any strangers into your home. Organizers say knowledge and awareness can go a long way towards keeping seniors scam-free. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
It's one of the most critical things you can learn, but yet it's also something people often put off learning. I'm talking about CPR. But recently, experts on CPR made it hard for people to put it off any further.
Gone are the days where you can only learn CPR by signing up at your local Red Cross. During National CPR Week, various cities and counties hosted CPR block parties to bring CPR to the public. And with the help of certified CPR instructors, Los Angeles was one of those cities that threw such a party right outside City Hall.
Currently, the survivor rate in LA County is only 6.9%. We're determined to change that, so we're encouraging the public to learn CPR.
And what people learned was how to administer hands-only CPR, a method not requiring mouth-to-mouth resuscitation.
What we're doing today is we're teaching the public hands-only CPR for adults and telling them about the recent updates and having them practice. Hopefully, that when if they see somebody collapse, they will have the knowledge to save somebody's life.
Passersby who stopped for a lesson also learned how to perform CPR on children and infants.
I probably can save lives, you know. Suppose you're in a mall or someplace and you see somebody is sick or in trouble. At least, this knowledge will help.
And as one instructor said, it can take just one minute to save a life, and that life could be that of your loved one.
The City Hall CPR Block Party was sponsored by Councilman Felipe Fuentes's office. EduLife Institute offers free CPR training every month at its center. Details can be found by going to cprblockparty.com. Another event that took place out on the lawn at City Hall was a donation drive benefiting the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission, which suffered losses in a recent fire. Here's Yana Kay.
Armed with bags of donations, these city employees carried a wide variety of goods and much-needed supplies to a collection drive at City Hall to help the San Fernando Valley Rescue Mission.
If you look behind you and see all that city employees have brought, it's really a great testament to the fact that we are a city family in so many different ways. And there's even more that's been coming to other places, and it's desperately needed.
Last month, a devastating fire in North Hollywood destroyed the mission's food pantry, vehicle fleet, thrift store warehouse, and the family shelter, displacing 26 families, including 18 children, and bringing services to a halt.
I've been so pleased that our community has stepped up and come to the aid of the mission. We're working to rescue the mission now.
And the work has paid off as numerous items were donated to the mission, which was established in 1998 to provide food, clothing, shelter, and assistance to needy families. Last year, it served more than 40,000 meals to the homeless.
We're so grateful for the community's support. And Angelinos are a group of generous folks and just asking all Angelinos to help out today, whether it's donating items, donating online at rescuethemission.org. This is an important service that we offer. We're helping the neediest individuals in the community have a second chance at life. And I think that's what Los Angeles is about.
In 2002, the mission launched its Family Shelter Program, providing basic life necessities to needy families. And ever since the fire, Councilmember Paul Krikorian has spearheaded donation efforts, including one held at Dodger Stadium recently to help get the mission back on its feet. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
Councilmember Paul Krikorian says he plans to hold more donation drives throughout the city. If you'd like to donate, go to rescuethemission.org. Now that school's out for the summer, the City of Los Angeles and the LA Unified School District have teamed up to give kids a healthy lunch choice despite not being in school. Yana Kay has more.
This display of healthy foods is just one sampling of what kids can be eating for lunch this summer. It's all part of a new collaboration between the City of LA and the LA Unified School District to offer free and healthy meals to kids when school is out.
The partnership between the city and the LAUSD will help ensure that public food dollars are spent in a way that delivers the best quality food with the highest nutritional value to all Angelinos. And, most importantly, our children.
City and LAUSD officials gathered at Lake Street Community Center to announce that they have joined forces for the first time to offer this existing summer meal program at more city locations.
We want our students to say they're into healthy eating this summer.
More than 520,000 students in LAUSD qualify for free or reduced-price meals during the school year. But many don't have enough to eat and oftentimes rely on junk food to get by when school's not in session. One student who used to take part in the 30-year-old summer meals program says it will teach kids to eat healthy.
I'm glad that during the summer, there's this program so that kids will be able to make it a habit, go there every day, instead of going out to McDonald's, Jack in the Box.
Now, in addition to veggie and turkey sandwiches, the program also offers really healthy snacks such as raisins, peanut butter, apples, and graham crackers. Meals will be served at more than 300 school sites and at more than 100 Los Angeles Recreation and Park Centers.
There's no better place to be able to express that healthy lifestyle than in a park and be able to provide a healthy lunch every day to those kids.
A healthy lunch that officials hope will help students take a bite out of hunger. I'm Yana Kay for LA This Week.
The Summer Food Service Program is expected to serve more than four-and-a-half million free meals during the summer. Students helping to make a name for one Valley school honored at City Hall. Plans are in the works to transform a vacant downtown warehouse, and the city's airport department names its head of Homeland Security. These stories and more in City Beat.
Some of the valley's brightest stars were honored in city council chambers. Students from El Camino Real Charter High School claim the school's seventh win in the Academic Decathlon National Championships.
In March, El Camino beat out the defeating champions at Granada Hills Charter High School. They became California Academic Decathlon champions. And then last month, El Camino and Granada Hills traveled to Hawaii to represent California at Nationals, and they took the number-one and number-two spots respectively.
The neighboring schools were among 51 teams competing from around the country, as well as from the United Kingdom and China, for top honors. Councilmember Jose Wezar has announced a multi-year plan for City Market South in the Fashion District that would convert the bacon produce warehouse into a creative office, retail, and culinary campus. Phase one would focus on revitalizing existing buildings located on San Pedro and San Julian between 11th and 12th Streets. Construction at the 10-acre space is expected this month, with projections for the site to be operational by the summer of 2015. The City of LA and Casa de la Cutora Maya recently celebrated Day of the Yucatec at City Hall. The event celebrates the contributions of the Yucatecan Mayan community to our city and our nation. The celebration further strengthens ties between the City of Los Angeles and Mexico.
It's that exchange and dialogue about culturism, tourism, that helps make sure that Los Angeles is not just on the cutting edge, but that we're sharing all of our knowledge with great people like those of the Yucatan Peninsula.
Officials say more than 150,000 Angelinos, 40,000 of whom live in the San Fernando Valley, have ties to the Yucatan. Los Angeles World Airport's Executive Director Gina Marie Lindsay names Airport Police Chief Patrick Gannon as the Deputy Executive Director of Homeland Security and Law Enforcement, effective immediately. Gannon, who had been performing the duties on an interim basis since January, beat out more than a dozen candidates. Lindsay said Gannon's performance in the aftermath of the November 1st, 2013, shooting at LAX, in which a TSA agent was killed, helped him to stand out as a candidate and a superb leader. Under his new post, Gannon will oversee counterterrorism efforts at LAX and Ontario and Van Nuys airports.
Recently, the Port of Los Angeles hosted a ceremony commemorating the 70th anniversary of D-Day. Rich Samuel spoke with veterans who served in World War II and brings us this report.
In the shadow of the SS Lane Victory, a World War II cargo vessel, Angelinos along with international dignitaries gathered to remember those who served in World War II. The French Consul General was on hand to present the Legion of Honor, France's highest award, to American veterans who fought to free Europe.
Democracy is not a given, and we must remember what our fathers did so that we can build a better world for the future. And that's one of the lessons of the Second World War and of Normandy.
D-Day remains the largest amphibious assault in history, involving over 2 million soldiers, sailors, and airmen. This 70th anniversary commemoration might be one of the last opportunities to salute the actual veterans of the battle.
The gentleman there gave me this carbine. And the last time I shot it was in Rennes, France. Just think, I was 20 years old then. I'm 90 now.
Legion of Honor recipient John Spagnoli fought across Europe all the way to Germany. Seven decades later, he hasn't forgotten his fallen comrades.
I'd like to see wars ended. Wars are terrible. You know, like all the guys I remember that were killed. Families everywhere in the country love them, and I'm going to cheer them. Can't avoid it.
From birth 49 at the Port of Los Angeles, this is Rich Samuel for LA This Week.
As for the World War II merchant vessel SS Lane Victory, it now serves as a museum and memorial. And in this week's list of things to do, the grand opening of the Downtown Harbor, a benefit concert headlined by Johnny Rivers, and an interactive event for the whole family at the Hammer.
The Port of Los Angeles officially opens the Downtown Harbor at Sixth Street and the Main Channel in San Pedro on Friday, June 20. The festivities take place from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. with live music from the Riptides, food and beverage booths from local restaurants, and entertainment and activities for the whole family. The official opening ceremony begins at 7:00 p.m. More information can be found at lawaterfront.org. Two-time Grammy Award-winning artist Johnny Rivers will be headlining a concert benefiting New Horizons on Saturday, June 21, 7:00 p.m. at the Ford Amphitheater. Fifty years ago, Johnny Rivers all but ushered rock and roll into the City of Los Angeles with his memorable opening act performance at the Whiskey a Go-Go. Meanwhile, New Horizons has provided programs and services to nearly 1,000 individuals with special needs throughout the San Fernando and Santa Clarita Valleys for the past 60 years. The Ford Amphitheater is located at 2580 Cowanga Boulevard East in Hollywood. Go to newhorizons-sfv.org for more details. And if you're looking to do something more interactive this weekend, something that gets the kids observing and thinking and moving, the Hammer Museum is hosting another Close Encounters event on Sunday, June 22, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. You'll get to create wearable art, and with the help of a professional dancer, come up with original choreography, all inspired by artworks on view in the galleries. All Hammer public programs are free. The Hammer is located at 10899 Woolshire Boulevard. Go to hammer.ucla.edu. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
A unique new playground in Studio City is allowing kids with special needs to play alongside their able-bodied counterparts. Gil Reyes has more on this universally accessible playground.
The special playground in Studio City welcomes everyone, especially kids with physical challenges. The swings are built with added neck support. The surfaces are smooth and rubberized for easy wheelchair access. Universally accessible playgrounds are the brainchild: TV producer Scott Williams, his wife Catherine, and the child they hardly knew.
I spent many, many years in the 1990s playing touch football on that field right there. I was dating Catherine at the time. Neither of us had any idea that one day we'd be married and that my beautiful wife, my wonderful wife, would give birth to our son Shane, whose short life would inspire all of this.
Their son Shane was born with spinal muscular atrophy. Shane died a few weeks after birth. But had he survived, he probably would have spent his life in a wheelchair. So Scott and Catherine Williams created Shane's Inspiration, a group dedicated to building playgrounds accessible to people like their son.
Really allows the entire family, all families of families of all ability levels to be able to come together and play together and enjoy the great recreational services of our parks.
Shane's Inspiration sparked a global movement, with similar parks recently opening in Israel, Ecuador, and Russia. This is the 27th such playground in the City of Los Angeles.
More than any city in the world. But we have 400 playgrounds. You know, so although I'm very proud of that, we got a long way to go. And we got a long way to go to improve in access all across the City of Los Angeles.
And building more spaces where children can play and embrace each other's differences. In Studio City, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The new playground at Studio City Rec Center is the 50th such playground in the world. And in this weekend tweets, the mayor started a Twitter campaign recently using the hashtag #WhyLucasInLA to entice filmmaker George Lucas to build his new cultural arts museum in Los Angeles. The mayor asked Angelinos to tweet their reasons why the museum should come to LA, and people certainly used their creativity, posting photos, drawings, and videos. For example, the mayor retweeted this Vine video by Benjamin Andrews with the caption, "R2-D2 continues his tour of downtown Los Angeles. All data gathered confirms why Lucas in LA should build a museum here." Lila Morrison also tweeted, "Why Lucas in LA? Because even robots love our beaches." and posted this photo of C-3PO and R2-D2 with the Santa Monica Pier behind them and the beach under their feet. At one time, the hashtag got so popular it was even trending on Twitter here in Los Angeles. The mayor is encouraging Angelinos to keep the reasons coming and hashtagging them, "Why Lucas in LA." And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at ellicityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
G'day. Troy McCavon from North Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel.
Good morning, good morning. I want to welcome each and every one of you to your Los Angeles City Council meeting. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Public is welcome. Madam Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Bloomingdale, Bonn, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Weezer, Corret, LaBange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Weston, ten members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
O'Farrell moves. Corret seconds. Next.
Community resolutions for approval.
Buscaino moves. Weezer seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday, and now would be the time for the flag salute.
Okay, if we could all rise, we'll be led today by Mr. Buscaino in our flag salute.
Sure. Please rise. Hands over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we go through the agenda at this time, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President, there's requests to continue item one to July 1st.
Without objection? That'll be the order?
Items two through 15 are items for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, specials members, well, let's prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Uh, I heard, Mr. Fuentes.
Can we send four, five, six forthwith?
We'll get to those.
We just did them.
Oh, we did, we just did four. So without objection, that'd be the order?
Thank you.
Next section.
Also, Mr. President, there's requests to send item 13 forthwith.
Okay, without objection.
For our presence for children, item seven.
Seven? Where are we now, Madam Clerk?
Items 16 through 21 are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have cards?
Yes, cards on all the items, 16, 17, 18, 19, and 21. Twenty and 21.
Okay, let's hold those items. That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings the council to items called special or presentations.
Okay, Mr. LaBange.
Mr. President, for clarification, I would like to ask our city attorney, who was John Marshall?
I believe he was the third Chief Justice of the United States.
Third Chief Justice. He passed the tests. Our great city attorney, thank you, Dion. I appreciate that. John Marshall High School is here today in formation. Some great assistant principals and a great principal is here to be honored. It's unusual that so much of the administrative staff retire all at one time, but this is the call at this time of year. John Marshall High School was founded in 1931 as an effort, a big citywide effort, to put a school in between Belmont High School, which we know is right at Second Street in Loma, and all the way out to Hollywood High School. Originally, it was selected to be built where ABC Studios is at Prospect and Talmage, but just like we now fight for the movie industry, they fight, keep that studio there, and they moved up to Tracy Street, 3939 Tracy Street, where they built the high school for under a million dollars at that time. But it's been billions of dollars of great service and educating young people in its classes throughout the years, and this team here I want to certainly salute here. Jerry Derice, Jerry, I want to salute you for all your service as a assistant principal, working your way up. You always inspired the young people there. Give Jerry a big hand. Robin Lee Ramirez, class of 1971, our class. I wanted to be a school teacher. Robin had better grades, so she got the job, and I came to City Hall. Robin Lee Ramirez, Assistant Principal, give her a hand. But Daniel Harrison right here has been the commander of the ship, and he's been very instrumental in my efforts, because as you know, we all come from someplace, whether it's the Legion and the great job Jose Weezer has done in helping the school and all things in Boyle Heights, Felipe the Tigers of San Fernando, the pilots of San Pedro, all the way around there, Mitch, the Oklahoma Sooners, and the Hamilton Yankees. I just wanted to throw that in there. All of the difference. It's nice when you grow up in a neighborhood, you're able to do it. And the big thing is, we have the smallest track in the city, 356 yards. When I got elected, I said, I want to fix the track. I want to fix the track for the community. And the amazing thing is, we did it with our combination work with the school district, and Roy Romer was then the superintendent. We got that done. And the biggest thing it did, Mr. President, it improved participation of young female athletes by over 200% on the track team. They used to have about 17 to 18 girls on track. When we got the new track at Field, the coaches encouraged them, they came out in big numbers. It's been a wonderful thing that we were able to do among many, many, many things. But Daniel Harrison, as the principal, is very special to us all. He's an exemplary educator and a leader of education here in this city. He's a graduate of Ashland High School in Ashland, Oregon, and a great duck from the University of Oregon, master's degree from Cal State Los Angeles. He began working in LA Unified, the social studies teachers at John Muir Junior High School in South Los Angeles, transferred to Huntington Park High School, famous Spartan czar for the scene in Greece, the big dance scene. And the famous dancer in that scene was a Marshall graduate, Annette Cordona, the late, great friend of Joanna Erdoza, my from Marshall High School. She was cha-cha, de gueguel. The world's all connected. Wonderful as it is, from Huntington Park High School, he went to Bell High School, working in the central offices later on for the district, and then, as I mentioned, with Roy Romer in the building program, was so important for that. He became principal of John Marshall High School in 2007, was moved off year-round calendar, which helped the education system. His tenure at John Marshall High, student achievement as a measure of academic performance rose by 105 points to 758. Student attendance rose from 91 to 94%, and graduation approved from 75 to 84%. During his tenure, he's made a big difference. The school athletic teams has repeatedly made playoffs and reached the city championship. In football, it also placed twice as city champion in the academic decathlon. San Fernando can't say that, okay? I'm just telling you, buddy. Okay, the Legion may, but San Fernando can't. But you can whip us in football 365 days a year. I gotta say, and baseball, city champs. I just had to give the Tigers a little love there. But the national decathlon champions in academics, real successful program there. He's retiring, effective the 24th of June. He'll be missed by our community, and I wanted to salute him today and say, Daniel Harrison, we have matching ties. There, you see that, Mr. President? John Marshall High ties, huh? Give Daniel Harrison a big hand right here, John Marshall High. Say a few words.
Thank you very much. It's been 35 years, but it's been an honor and a privilege, and I'm taking with me many, many fond memories of the students of Los Angeles.
Good job, Daniel. Jerry?
I just want to also say, great for the Hamilton Yankees, which is where I graduated from, but nevertheless, 34 years at Marshall High School has been the best. Thank you.
Good job. And I just want to close, too. For me, Mr. President, the first public meeting I went to was in 1972, and it was a local community newspaper. Support your local community newspapers. It was about after the '71 earthquake, they were going to tear down the old high school. We fought to save it, which really has made a difference. The school's made a great difference for me, my teachers made a great difference, and coaches, but Daniel, you made a great difference right now. Another hand for the teachers and educators at John Marshall High. Thank you, Mr. President.
Now, before you stop, Mr. LaBange, I have Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Harrison, congratulations, and I just want to give a shout out to our colleague, Tom LaBange. Over the last 12 years, I've had a front seat to witness your leadership on improving the quality of the educational experience for students at Hollywood High and at Marshall. You've improved the quality of the educational experience for thousands of high schoolers, and the city needs to recognize that. So congratulations, Tom.
Congratulations, Mr. LaBange, and all of the work you've done with LA High as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, let's give them one more round of applause. Thank you all for what you do. Thank you for coming. If I could ask everyone that's here today to indulge me as I ask for all to rise, we would like to have a moment of silence for firefighter pilot Brian Lee. His funeral is occurring as we speak. This council is being represented there by President Pro Tim Mitch Englander. We want to thank Mr. Lee for all of his service, and if we could just have a moment of silence. Thank you. We'll start off today with item 16, which is called "Special" by Mr. Walsh. If you'd please come forward on item 16, sir.
This is John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is the renewal of the Business Improvement District. I've had some good experiences with our Business Improvement District in Hollywood with getting rid of the drugs. I see nobody up here saying, get rid of the Business Improvement District. It's paid for by my landlord's taxes, which are passed on to me. That's fine. They are mostly retired police officers, and they do a good job. And I'd like to publicly apologize to America for the mayor using the X-bomb.
Stay on the subject. No, stay on the subject. That has no, okay, he's, sit down, Mr. Walsh. You gotta stay on the subject. You know what? He is disrupting, disrupting the meeting, and you cannot do that. When you come up to speak on the item, you have to speak pertaining to the item. If you don't, you will forfeit your time. Now, let us prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Mr. Corret.
Forthwith, please, Mr. President, on number 16, and I'd like to ask that it be immediately delivered to the mayor.
Without objection, that will be the order? Let's go to item 17.
Minute two. John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or Jay Walsh Confidential tweeting at HollywoodDems. This is the rent escrow account program. I was first a renter here in 1966, and my landlord was UCLA. Since '76, I've lived at the same address. You do an excellent job. I'm not here to attack you. You do an incredibly good job on REIT. What this is, is if you out there have violations, code violations, and your landlord doesn't fix them, and there's a long list here, then the city doesn't allow the money, the rent, to go to the landlord. It goes to the city until he fixes things. When you do a good job, you don't scream and yell at me. See how quiet they are when I praise them? HollywoodHighlands.org.
Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, now we'll go to item 18. Mr. Walsh, it's you again. No, I'm sorry, we're gonna now go to 19. We're going to 19, so you can come forward on item 19, Mr. Walsh.
The city, John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, the city has too many street banners. However, this is for Central Avenue Corridor, from East Washington Boulevard to East Vernon. These are many African-American, Asian, and Hispanic small businesses, so therefore, we 100%, and it's not going to be too expensive from the AA flag and banner manufacturing, so we, in fact, 100% support small businesses in LA, and we want these banners up there so their businesses, they won't go out of business because they're in very high crime areas, and the LAPD doesn't patrol their areas the way they do west of La Brea. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Once again, usually I support you on most things. This is a lease approval for some space for the Greater Wiltshire Neighborhood Council. They do an excellent job, and at 7-Eleven, South Plymouth, it's a moderate cost. The neighborhood councils do an excellent job, and therefore, we 100% approve this. But wait till we get to public comment.
Now, let's stay on the subject. Let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
We'll now move to, I guess, item 21.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This is the most important issue here for property owners and for people who are having zoning problems. They're bringing in marijuana, medical marijuana clinics into your black or Hispanic neighborhood. These are the final maps. This, you have to get a copy, you can get it on the internet, of the map to see what your zoning is, because this is the way it works. There's two cities, one east of La Brea, one west of La Brea. They don't allow medical marijuana clinics west of La Brea. They don't allow bars at three to four to a block, east of La Brea. They allow it east of La Brea, but not west of La Brea. If you have property, you must check these maps. They will protect you, because they vote for the special interests, which means alcohol Hollywood, total alcohol, out of control, and hit and run as a result. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Thank you.
Great education, Mr. Walsh. And the whole point of this conversation today, Angelinos, is can we respect the fact that we still have these pot shops popping up all over without the permit or the process of this city? Jose Weezer still has on Caesar Chavez.
Mr. President, he is not talking about a final track, he is not talking about a final track map.
Dion, may I get back on track?
No, no, no. What you need to do is stay, you shouldn't have got off, so stay on item 21.
Okay, so I'll go back to 21 for you guys, because you know, you have to develop a story guideline here, like John Walsh did, however, I do mine differently, because we're not all the same.
Stay on the item.
Final maps in various council districts. You cannot approve, under these maps, locations to vend for convenience and consumption that it's okay to have medical marijuana in place and restaurants serving alcohol without a permit. So when you throw a fiesta on a map, be sure, because Mr. Weezer is going to be there on June 20th and 22nd.
He again is not talking about the final.
Come on, come on, Mr. Herman. No, just stay. We're not going to debate it.
So on a vacant lot on the map in Council District 14 on Caesar Chavez, formerly known as Brooklyn Avenue, pay attention to the construction, the development.
Okay, thank you. You just refused to stay on the item, so thank you. Let's stop his time. All right, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Speakers, please stay on the item. Thank you. That's approved. Okay, item 18. We will continue that item until tomorrow, Madam Clerk. So that will be till June 18th.
Yes.
So without objection, that'll be the order. And that brings us where? That brings us where?
Mr. President, that brings counsel to general public comment.
Mr. Walsh, Leroy Marshall, Donna Peerman, please come forward. Mr. Walsh, Donna Peerman, and Leroy Marshall. No applause. Go right ahead, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, resident of LA since 1976. I was interrupted. I want to apologize to America. We have a mayor in the city who's turning into the Toronto mayor, Rob Ford. And even he didn't use four-letter words in front of hundreds of thousands of children who were watching, particularly on the Fox News Channel. Now, why did he do this? I've known him since 2001, the mayor, okay? The problem is, the mayor is on narcotics. He was on cocaine. I worked in a clinic for many years in Berkeley. I know what those feelings are. Even on the Jimmy Kimmel Show, when Mayor de Blasio handed out all those hot dogs, you know what the hopped-up mayor of LA said? Those hot dogs are garbage. And the audience went, woo! He was... I'm telling you right now, I want to apologize. And remember, the mayor winked and has not apologized. None of these people up here will apologize. And they will use the F-bomb anytime they want in front of children. It is despicable what is happening in this city. Because at any time, Herb Wesson can be removed by the mayor. The mayor is the boss here. The mayor is on... And let me tell you who he got his narcotics from. He got it from a man named Glenn Dake, who he appointed to the MWD. He's had him for many years. Many years ago, he was an aide. Mr. Dake and the mayor are gay lovers. His wife knows about it. It's a 20-year thing. The mayor of the city of Los Angeles, used as a drug connection, his boyfriend, Glenn Dake. Now, if I am wrong, all they have to do is say, John Walsh, you're psychotic, because I have proof. And the second, that he is the mayor's boyfriend. And that's okay if he wants to...
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Let's please cut... Please, let's save the world temporarily. Let's cut his time. If we could have Mr... If we could have Mr. Marshall followed by Donna Peerman. Yes, sir.
I'll try not to be as dramatic. What I've come here to discuss is the airport situation. I've written a labor proposal, and I'd like to read it to the council if I will, if I may. Dear City Council members, the economic fairness and equality should be a major priority to the city council, particularly members representing people of color. The predatory capitalism must not be tolerated from contractors who receive licenses and permits to operate in Los Angeles-owned venues. These predatory contractors do not seek to provide services or jobs, but simply to abuse the people for the sake of obtaining profit. Currently at LAX, these contractors are attempting to reduce wages, freeze wages, and eliminate benefits. The cost of living in Los Angeles is already extremely high. How are workers supposed to survive? They're not, period, according to these companies. Human life means nothing, and that's why I'm proposing the following. An airport minimum wage of $15 an hour, plus benefits. This should include the cost of living increase. A yearly audit of the payrolls to protect the workers from wage theft. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a major problem out there. This is, as I pointed out, a worker from LAX and a worker that works at LAX and a union representative should be on the lower board. The current board has been extremely lax in their responsibilities overseeing these contractors. Quarterly inspections of all vehicles for safety and proper functions. The council should mandate that no vehicle that carries multiple passengers should exceed more than 10 years of age. Ladies and gentlemen out there, there are people driving trucks that are now 30 years old. I don't dare say that nobody in this council room drives a vehicle that's 30 years old. That's ridiculous. A dedicated Cal OSHA team of inspectors who have escort icons and badges for LAX. Add a panel meeting that had been... Am I out of time?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Marshall. Ms. Peerman, followed by Mr. Herman.
Congratulations, Los Angeles Kings. Anyway, I wanted to tell you that Miriam doesn't want to come downtown to speak because it's a big hardship. When we could speak in Van Nuys by video conferencing, and you can actually do it in an inexpensive way if they would look at it. I believe in the right to free speech, and I believe we should have the video conferencing, and we have the right to bear arms. I don't trust Obama. He doesn't have any military experience, and he shouldn't trust Iran. Iran wants to destroy Israel and wants to destroy all Jews and push them all in the ocean. Islamic terrorists are in Iraq. Islamic statute of Iraq and Syria, ISIS. Millions of Sunnis are after CHIs. Iraq soldiers left their weapons for the terrorists to take. Cannons and all their guns. Soon they will go after the people of the book. We need to get rid of the gun ban. Let law-abiding citizens arm themselves and be able to take care of themselves in case there's terrorists and gangs out there. You can't trust Iraq. You can't turn Iraq over to Iran. Iran will control the oil and destroy the West. So we can't do this, and we shouldn't allow... Certainly, Obama shouldn't trust Iran if they want to destroy Israel and wants to destroy the West. That's wrong. We need to have the city council stop overspending on Westfield Project, on the bullet trains, and huge, the Twin Towers that Garcetti loves so much. Get rid of that. We don't need that. We need to... And last of all, as I said again, we need to bring back video conferencing for the people in the valley to have the right to speak. That was wrong of you, wrong of you, wrong of you.
Thank you. Before I go to the next speaker, Mr. Kukorian and Mr. Labange. Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm told that on item number 16, which I asked to proceed forthwith, that to ensure immediate delivery to the mayor, I need to ask for a vote of the members. So I would move that item 16 be delivered immediately to the mayor.
Is...
And the term is urgent forthwith pursuant to Rule 51.
Okay. Let's prepare to vote on that, members. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
So that's super forthwith or urgent. Mr. Labange?
We have a very special guest here from Marlboro School in the heart of the city of Los Angeles, their teacher, Ellie Donnell. Please welcome the students from Marlboro. Give them a big hand. Stand up, young ladies. Stand up, stand up, stand up. Okay, thank you. That's all right.
Okay, Mr. Herman?
Go Kings, go Kings! What a day of celebration! However, how dare you, Mr. Garcetti? Mr. Garcetti, the mayor of Los Angeles, how dare you use the F-bomb before our children, our constituents, our representatives of the future, and use the F-bomb? We demand an apology from the mayor. Because if Zuma Dog is thrown out for three months for using the F-bomb, B-bomb, D-bomb, you're wrong, Mr. Mayor. Never, ever say two rules. Never be a drunk and get a DUI like Mr. Wezar and get away with it. And number two, never, never, never use the F-bomb, Mr. Garcetti. For we, the constituents of Los Angeles, we, the Angelenos, deserve and demand an apology. It sounds funny, but you owe us an apology before these children, all the children that were sitting here. And then again, I'm inviting all of you chincheros that like B-Boy Summit on Caesar Chavez, formerly known as Brooklyn. Mr. Wezar is throwing a graffiti party. We can dance, we can sing, we can rap, and we can defecate and urinate because Mr. Wezar's best interest is in the public, and he will provide urinals and sanitary restrooms for this event taking place June 20th through the 22nd, 2014, in Los Angeles. It is proud to present the world-famous B-Boy Summit. Come to Boyle Heights, you're all invited. On me, your constituent, your taxpayer, we, the public. And going forth with Mr. John Walsh's point of views, he's right. I hate to say this. Garcetti, stop using the F-bomb and keep it at home with your boyfriends. End of discussion. Thank all of you, Angelenos.
Mr. City Attorney, is it a full moon? Okay, let's... That ends... Oh, Mr. Kukorian? Did you want to... Or is there...
No, that was taken care of. Thank you.
Okay. All right, Madam Clerk, what is before this council now?
Council has motions for post and referral.
We can consider those posted and referred, and that brings us where?
That clears the desk.
Okay. Announcements, members? Any announcements? If we could all rise for adjourning motions? And just to... On the record, Madam Clerk, we did continue item 18 until tomorrow, correct? Okay. Adjourning motions. I'll look to Mr. Wezar, Mr. Fuente's side of the room. Adjourning. Now, I'll look to my right. Adjourning motions. Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.